Oh.
There we go.
Okay. I think we are all right. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, we are live.
All right.
We are all right. I think we are.
Welcome to the December 15th Board Voting Meeting for the Exeter Township School District. Due to the governor's restrictions and new orders this weekend, we are meeting virtually this evening. We have lots of guests and we are virtual. But before we begin, I would like to note that we held an executive session last Wednesday evening, December 9th, to discuss personnel issues and also reorganization of the board. To start us off this evening, I would like Dr. McLendon to make a special motion honoring Dr. David Bender.
Sharon, I think you muted there.
All right, okay, sorry. Okay, so thank you, Mrs. Bender and your family for joining us this evening. And I want to express our sincerest condolences to you and your family at this time. And I don't have to tell you, Dave was a wonderful man. I know that you already know that many people express that. So tonight, we're going to honor Dr. David S. Bender with this, with the resolution. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors adopt Resolution Number 2020-05, honoring the memory of former School Board Director Dr. David S. Bender, who passed away in November 2020.
Any discussion? Dr. McLendon, would you like to read the resolution to us, please?
Okay, I'll read it. And then if anybody wants, I see that there's some people who knew. I was on the board in 2010, and that's where I first met Dr. Bender. But there, I see the people on who have known. I know, I see Mr. Quinter, who was on for 16 years with him. So if anybody wants to then say anything, you know, I'm not trying to hijack the meeting, Allison, but you know, feel free after that, okay? So Resolution Honoring the Memory of Dr. David S. Bender. Whereas David Bender, who unselfishly dedicated 34 years of service to the Exeter Township Board of School Directors with great distinction and success, died in November 2020. And whereas David Bender enriched the Exeter Township community by his tireless public service as a school director from 1983 until 2017. And whereas David Bender demonstrated the spirit of public service by serving as a member of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors, as Board President, as Board Vice President, as Chair of many committees, and as a mentor to the new, to new Board members over his many years of service. Now, therefore be it resolved that we are truly saddened by the passing of Exeter Township School Board Director Dr. David S. Bender, a true champion for others. We applaud and are extremely grateful for the unwavering support that Dr. Bender shared with the students, families, and staff of the Exeter Township School District. As a true public servant, Dr. Bender was a strong advocate for students and the broader community. The incredible manner in which Dr. Bender served and gave to others was a positive gift to our district. He had further resolved that this resolution be included in the official minutes of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors as a permanent record of the achievements of and respect for one of Exeter Township's finest citizens, and that the original be presented to the family of Dr. David S. Bender with sincere sympathy and appreciation. Adopted this the 15th day of December 2020. I just want to say one thing, I forgot to mention this, that Russ Deesinger is not on here, but he was invited. And I want to give him credit because he actually recommended this. And he, he wrote the resolution. And Donna Napoli also did some editing on it. So I wanted to give him credit and thank him for that, too.
During Dr. Bender's tenure on the board, there were 10 Board Presidents, including himself, for two years. And we're honored tonight that Mr. Quinter and Mr. Levann joined us as Board members. And also, of course, Dr. Hamburger, our current member. So thank you for, to those of you that are joining us tonight to be a part of this.
Allison, before you make any motions or take official actions, you should open the meeting with the roll call.
Okay.
Can I do a roll call?
All right, should we do that first before we vote?
Yeah.
Have anything else they would like to say about Dr. Bender? Before we vote and do the roll call?
Could I talk, could I be recognized, Allison?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Quinter.
I was really heartbroken, as I'm sure the family was with Dave's passing. I think I have the unique position of not only did I serve with David, but David served with my father. And which just gives you an idea of how long he was there contributing to the district. I thought of two things that stuck out in my mind. Of course, David was my Vice President for a while. And one time, we got, we started talking. And Allison, I'm sorry you've heard this before. David and I were talking about what was the difference between working with my father and working with me? And David sort of, he sort of wanted to stay away from that question. Then finally, he came out and told me, he says, well, your dad tended to build a consensus. He says, while you tend to roll over people. So I took that as a little bit of advice and never changed though. But then the second thing that I remember specifically with David, we had a, an administrator did a lot of shifting around with the people. And we ended up with about, no, 100, 150 faculty members at the School Board meeting, and they weren't happy. And they explained the situation. And I said, I said, fine, this is what we're going to do. Next, when they come back to school tomorrow, or whatever the day was, they go back to where they were initially. And then we will have individual discussions of any movements that you want to make. David sort of leaned over, he was the Vice President. He sort of leaned over to me, says, you can't do that. I said, I know that, David, and you know it, but nobody else here seems to know it. But David was a fine gentleman. And what he can, there is no resolution that could recognize everything that he did. But I know that he certainly was an inspiration to me. And his contributions are endless. So thank you for being able to speak.
Thank you for joining us, and thank you for speaking, Mr. Quinter.
So Allison, this is Mike Chapina. First, I would like to recognize and thank the family for being on this evening. It's an honor to meet you and know that you probably gave up some of your time with your father so he could devote it to the board and to the community. So thank you for being here this evening. I'm going to like to thank Ken Levann and Bob Quinter for also being here, who have served the community. And also Mr. Deesinger for drafting the resolution. It's kind of fascinating to me that we're here on Zoom because one of the things that I fondly remember of Dr. Bender is his use of little day timer booklets to keep his schedule. And, you know, I always found that fascinating because, you know, all of us are pulling out our iPhones and our iPads and all that kind of stuff. And he pulled out that little notepad that he kept in his breast pocket and, you know, just filled everything in. And, you know, ended up actually being probably more organized than most of us. So I always remember that. I also, he was very learned. He was very thoughtful. And he was very civil. And I've always came back to civil when I talked about Dave. And, you know, even on a local school board, we deal with an awful lot of emotional matters at time. And, you know, not only were there times when he told Bob that there were things that he couldn't do, but he often told Bob to just calm down. And that was his sort of peacemaker. But in being a peacemaker, he was not a pushover. He was very definitive, he was very thoughtful, he was very kind, he was very compassionate. This community probably doesn't understand how lucky it is or was to have had Dr. Bender serving this school board. So I just want to thank him in memoriam for his service and thank his family who's here this evening for sharing him with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapina. All right.
I just wanted to say one thing about this 34 years. I asked Russ, was there anybody that, in the whole state of Pennsylvania, that ever got to 34 years? And he didn't really get that back to me. But, you know, he got back some statistics that show that there, there are many people who do not even complete the four years, you know, much less 34 years. And, and Mike, you're, you know, right to really thank the family because I think that, like, I remember when I got on, I was told there were two meetings a month. Okay, and there are two meetings a month. But there are many other meetings that you attend, the committee meetings, the time you spend behind the scenes, you know, reading and getting ready for meetings. And I'm sure, Mrs. Bender, you could, you could attest to the amount of time that, you know, that Dave had to spend involved with district things. And, and it's a volunteer position. And sometimes we don't get, even get thanked, we get criticized, in fact. So that is a, to, to, that is a remarkable accomplishment to serve your community like this for 34 years. And Mr. Quinter, you said there's no resolution. He should be something more than that because that is just, I just think it's remarkable that someone would give them, be so selfless that they would give of their time for 34 years. So, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for his service.
Yes, thank you very much, everybody, for attending this evening. And thank you to his family for being here. We will do our roll call before we do our vote. So Brian, can you go ahead with that?
Yes. Allison Wilson.
Present.
Hunter Aarons.
Present.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Present.
Dr. David Hamburger.
Here.
Michael Chapina.
Here.
Dr. Sharon McLendon.
Present.
Hooray Miller.
Here.
Michelle Stratton.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. All right, there is a motion on the table to approve a resolution honoring the member, memory of former School Board Member and Director Dr. David S. Bender.
Can I ask for a roll call vote on that as well?
Sure.
Roll call. Hunter Aarons.
Hi.
John Fiddler.
Hi.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Hi.
Dr. David Hamburger.
Hi.
Michael Chapina.
Hi.
Dr. Sharon McLendon.
Hi.
Hooray Miller.
Hi.
Michelle Stratton.
Hi.
Allison Wilson.
Hi.
Nine zero.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Allison, I think Mrs. Bender is trying to say something.
Oh, you're on mute, Mrs. Bender.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody. This means a lot to our family. Dave truly enjoyed all the time that he spent on this school board. And our family appreciates all the nice comments. And we really, it's just nice, nice of you to do this for him. We, we are very happy about it. Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you for joining us tonight. Okay. All right, we will move forward in our agenda then. Thank you, everybody, for that. There, okay, some people are dropping off, so, okay. All right, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Minor.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. This evening, I just have a few items. First of all, we had to close high school this week as per the mediation orders. We hit a positive case count of six. I think it actually may be up to seven at this point on the dashboard. So the high school building will be closed through the holiday break. We also went out today and announced that tomorrow would be full virtual school for all students due to the inclement weather, and that Thursday would be a snow day. And then we'll see what happens with the weather on Friday. So we are pushing forward, and we appreciate everyone's cooperation as we look to keep our schools safe. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is public comment. And I would just like to read something before we open it up for public comment. Because the School Board values and recognizes the importance of public opinion on educational issues, the Board now invites any community or staff member to make public comment. In order to permit fair and orderly expression of public comment, please follow the following guidelines as outlined in our policy. Before beginning, please clearly state your name and address, and then limit your comments to four minutes. All comments should be addressed to me as Board President. Please do not address or question Board members individually. Board members may choose to respond or clarify facts, but they are under no obligation to do so. In respect for your community and for our Board members, I ask that you present your comments with decorum and with consideration of our dedication to serving the community. Okay, Joe, do we have anyone with public comment?
Yes, we do. And go ahead, I believe we have unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. My name is Donald Dickerson. I live on East Loraine Road in, in Exeter Township. I'm here tonight representing the Patriotic Order Sons of America, Camp 230. I believe on your agenda, you have a motion to approve the building or erecting of a 20-foot aluminum flagpole with flag and on a concrete base, and also with a solar-operated light to shine on the flag. As I've indicated, I'm a member of POS of A, Camp 230. We're located at the St. Lawrence Borough Hall. We have, in the past, supported the school district by supplying flags for the various schools. Also, we have contributed to two graduating seniors, some cash, some cash awards. So we're very involved and supportive of the Exeter School District. Tonight, we are asking the Board's permission. And first of all, thank you for Dr. Hamburger, the Facilities Committee, and Dr. Minor's office for forwarding our request. I thank you very much for doing that. We are doing this proposal so that we may have a flag flying at the one-room schoolhouse located on the Jackson Wall Elementary School grounds. We, at no cost to the district, the POS of A, Camp 230, will pay all of the expenses involved in erecting the flagpole so that the Old Glory can shine in front of the one-room schoolhouse. Again, I appreciate all of you for considering this request. Thank you for having me speaking. And anything, any questions that you might have, I'm here to answer. Thank you again for giving me this opportunity on behalf of Camp 230, POS of A. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Dickerson?
Allison, could I just ask that we move this up front for discussion now in case there are any questions that are germane? You know, the only one that I can really think of is, is maintenance. But I think that the administration can handle figuring that out with the post. But I just thought that that might be respectful to Mr. Dickerson being here this evening.
Okay, Hunter, it's under your section. Would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following Finance Facilities and Audit Committee item. Number four, a request from local Washington Camp 230 of the Patriotic Order Sons of America, which is located in St. Lawrence to place a flagpole on the site of the one-room schoolhouse located at the Jackson Wall Elementary School grounds. The organization will pay the entire cost of a concrete base, flagpole, flag, and solar light to shine on the flag at night.
Second.
All right, there is a motion, a second. Is there any debate? Or discussion?
Call the question.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Dickerson.
Thank you, and thank you to the Board.
You're welcome. When can we look forward to seeing the flag?
Yes. It will take a little while. We'll probably put this off until better weather in the spring. But it will be up, and we'll have a dedication ceremony.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, let us, be sure to let us know.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that ends our, we don't have any more public comments?
No, that is all.
Okay. Then we are going to move forward to School Board Actions. If there are no objections, the Board of School Directors appoints the following School Board Committees and Liaisons to other distributed committees per the attached list.
Second.
You don't have to second it because I would just say now, hearing that there are no objection. Okay, that's fine.
I missed it, my bad.
No, no problem. Hearing no objections, the attached committee and liaison lists are approved as written. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves meeting minutes from last month's School Board meetings, the November 10th and November 17th Board Workshop and Voting Meeting.
I have an objection to the minutes of 11:10, 20, please.
Okay.
There is, at the end of the minutes, I had requested some feedback from the building leaders as to how things were going. And I just didn't see the narrative contained in the minutes of the comments from the building leaders. So I'd like us to add those comments in the, into the minutes.
Mr. Chapina, I believe that, that evening, we were having our minutes taken by someone participating virtually, and there were audio issues. So we will do our best to resolve that via the tape. But that is why that, there may have been some omissions there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just a point of order question. Allison, do you need to say by unanimous consent it is recommended? Or something with the unanimous consent referral in the motion?
We can ask Sean, I'm not sure that we do. Mr. Long.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's completely required. You know, it, I don't have a problem with it, obviously, because it may clarify just a little bit clearer. I don't think it's necessarily needed, but it may add clarity.
Okay.
So would the, the clarifying comment be by unanimous consent as recommended at the Board of School Directors, yada, yada, yada?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Um. So we have, we have a, let's say, like, all in favor of the minutes being approved.
So.
There was a question on that. And Mr. Chapina brought up, so basically, it was a second because he brought up an issue that he would like to have noted in the, in the minutes.
So is that something that needs to be looked back on? And then we just approve November 17th at this point?
Should we not approve it yet?
Well, if, if there's going to be significant revisions that change the, you know, the content substantially, I think that they should probably be held until that's done. I've seen before where you approve the minutes with the recommended changes. And usually, those are grammatical or spelling mistakes. Or sometimes there's somebody who's noted as being absent, who is there, vice versa. But if they're going to be changed substantially, I think they should probably just be held.
Well, I'm not sure they're going to be changed substantially. I think we should probably, and I'll ask Sean this, I would just approve the minutes. I have no problems with the minutes if there can be an addendum, presuming that the audio issues can be resolved. So, Mr. Chapina, you're saying you're okay with approving, your objection isn't, in a sense, saying, I don't want to approve the minutes. You're just saying, I, I want to add that on when they're available at some point in the future. If, if the technological issue can be resolved, that's it. Okay, I mean, it would be easier if we would approve them instead of holding them if that's, if that's really what you're saying. Yep, that's it.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the Treasurer's Report. By unanimous consent, if there are no, no objections, the Board of School Directors approves the following Treasurer's Report items. The Treasurer's Report for November 2020 and Payment Requests, November 18 through December 15. Hearing no objection, the Treasurer's Report items are approved. I will now turn it over to Mr. Aarons for Finance Facilities and Audit.
By unanimous consent, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approve the following Finance Facilities Audit and Audit Committee Items, 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6.
Do we need a second?
No.
No.
Hearing no objections, the Audit Committee's report agenda is approved. Moving on to Personnel, Mr. Chapina.
Yeah, before I mess this whole thing up, I would like to pull out two things, item number two and item number four.
Okay, then why don't you just go ahead and do it as normal?
Mrs. Wilson, I, I want to pull out an item, too. I tell you now, our way to Mr. Chapina is done.
Um, you want to pull something out from Personnel?
I do, I want to.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to pull out under Appointments, number four, Appointments, Administrative Staff.
Okay, 4A.
4A, yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chapina, go ahead.
So, yeah, so by, we're not doing a unanimous consent. And so it is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the following Personnel Committee. Number one, retirements, support staff. Number two, resignations, support staff.
Did you just say you wanted to pull number two?
Well, he pulled Patrick's.
2A, okay.
Pull 2 and 4.
Okay.
So how about I do this? How about I just say it's recommended the Board of School Directors approve the following Personnel Committee Items, with the exceptions of Items Number 2A and Number 4A. Actually, I want to go with Number 2A, number, yeah, 2A and 4A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, can I just say quick? Christine Chabon is on here as a regular instruction aide at a Watten Creek. And I remember when I was a first grader, I believe that Mrs. Chabon was one of my aides with my IEP and helped me, helped enforce my mom's no sugar policy at lunch, too, in the first grade. And I just wanted to wish her all the best in her retirement and just thank her for the work that she's done.
Thank you.
We're voting on everything except 2A and 4A right now?
Correct, yes. All right, all in favor, say aye.
So can I? So can I, I don't think we had a chance for discussion on those items yet.
Yeah, Hunter, just to, go ahead, keep going.
I would like, because these are related, if we can have an explanation of the creation of the Director of Teaching and Learning position.
Yeah, Mrs. Wilson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes, I can.
Are you able to hear me? Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if my video was taking up my bandwidth. This is Dr. Minor. So thank you for the question. As is noted on the agenda under resignations, we this evening are recommending that the Board accept the resignation of Dr. Patrick Winters as the Assistant Superintendent. I would like to personally congratulate Dr. Winters. Last night, he was approved to be the new Superintendent of the Twin Valley School District, and I am so happy and pleased for him. He has been and will continue to be a wonderful Assistant Superintendent, and as much as we will miss him greatly at Exeter, I'm very excited to have him become a colleague within the county, and I look forward to working with him as our districts collaborate and in countywide meetings. In light of Dr. Winters' resignation, is my recommendation that at this time, we do not fill the position of Assistant Superintendent in the district. However, I'm not recommending the abolishment of the position, so that if at some later point a future Superintendent or I or the Board would decide that that position needed to be reinstated, it could be reinstated. And at this point in time, in lieu of the position of Assistant Superintendent, I'm recommending item three, which is the creation of the Director of Teaching and Learning position as an Act 93 position, and the job description is attached for the Board. One of the primary and most important functions that Dr. Winters served in his role and continues to serve through his resignation date of March 31st is overseeing all things pertaining to teaching and learning. And so by establishing this position and having it focused specifically on those areas, I believe that it will best assist me as Superintendent in terms of rounding out our cabinet. So right now, I'm very, very fortunate to serve with Mrs. Dawn Harris as our People's Services Director, Dr. Kristi Heller as our HR Director, Mr. Brian Feig as our Business Manager, and of course, Dr. Winters. So I believe that by creating that position of Director of Teaching and Learning, I'll have extremely well-rounded cabinet, and we'll be able to perform all the functions of the district as well as move ahead with those items that I propose to the Board are most important, including improving our graduation rate to a goal of 100% our reading and math achievement, and all of our other academic and teaching and learning goals. I do believe at this point that is the best way to further those for the district.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Mr. Japina?
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following Personnel Items, number two, under resignations 2A, Patrick T. Winters, Assistant Superintendent, resignation effective on or before March 31st, 2021, to assume the Superintendent position in the Twin Valley School District.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I wanted to say two things. I wanted to mention that I had told Dr. Winters a few months ago that any school district would be extremely lucky to have him as their Superintendent. He got snagged up sooner than I was expecting, and I just want to congratulate him and say that Twin Valley made a good choice. He's a good man. I also wanted to say in regards to Mr. Flam that I'm happy to see that Dr. Minor has seen the potential and outstanding skill sets in our staff at Exeter, and I'm also very excited for him in this new role.
I just wanted to follow the train a little bit for Patrick. I made this reference one time before, and I made it erroneously, so I'm going to correctly state it this time. But like the famous play, A Man for All Seasons by Robert Bull, you know, Patrick definitely is a man for all seasons. Definitely his character and the way that he operates with grace and tries to achieve understanding and everything that he's working on certainly has been my experience with him, and I'm really disappointed to see him leave. You know, Exeter is a better district than Twin Valley, no offense. I'll probably get in trouble for saying that, too, but I don't really care. But, you know, I wish you all the best, and I'm going to be looking forward to having you in Berks County, too.
Yeah, thanks, Hunter. I'd also like to say a few words about Patrick. I was fortunate enough to be part of the interview team when Patrick was first considered for the position of Assistant Superintendent in the district. And, you know, I can remember commenting to somebody who was sitting next to me. I said, let's just lock the door here and not let this guy go, because he was that exceptional in the interview process and everything we've seen from that point. I mean, it doesn't always work out that way in interviews. You know, what you see sometimes isn't what you always get. But I am convinced that everything that we saw in that interview has been actualized in his performances and a Assistant Superintendent, and more. So I want to thank him for the service to the district. Patrick, you know, I think you've made a really, you know, swift but appropriate ascent to Superintendent, and I know that, you know, the years you've spent here have been informative for you and helpful, especially the time you're spending with Dr. Minor, which I think has been, I think, instructive and kind of helping you kind of shape the kind of Superintendent you're going to be at Twin Valley. I also am very glad that you're staying in the in the county. We'll be able to rub elbows occasionally and looking forward to those times when we can see you in the future. So good luck to you.
Yes, I wanted to say good luck, Patrick. When we, Dr. Hamburger and I got an opportunity to speak with some Board members from Twin Valley, and I, they, you know, they asked me what I thought, and I said, you know, I know Twin Valley, I know the community there, I know the kids there and the teachers there, and they, you are very lucky to have you coming your way, coming their way. So we wish you the best of luck. So thank you very much, Patrick.
Can I say a few words? Is that okay?
Sure, go ahead.
Before you go, I just also want to thank you. You navigated some difficult years here with a lot of I don't know how to say it, but you were a true gentleman through that process. You were very kind to your staff and responsive. You put in an awful lot of time. You were at all the meetings, and not just the two meetings a year that I think Sharon talked about, but there are the two meetings a month. You were at all the meetings. So thank you very much, and I wish you Godspeed in your new job.
Thank you.
Before you go, I'd like to congratulate you also, Dr. Winters, and echo what everyone else is saying. You know, you are truly going to be missed, and that is a gain for Twin Valley and a loss for Exeter. And I just really appreciate it and enjoy working alongside of you on on the Curriculum Committee as well, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you so much to everyone. This is one of these moments where I'm I'm almost speechless, and those of you that know me know that that's rare because I love to talk. But I'm so moved by all of the kind words. My years in Exeter have been wonderful, and I have so thoroughly enjoyed working with each and every one of you. It has been my privilege to serve the district. It's been an honor for me, and I have learned so much. This is a wonderful Board, and I've enjoyed getting to know all of you, and the administrative team here is fantastic. I'm so appreciative of Dr. Minor and everybody in Cabinet and folks that are on this call. It's been an amazing time, and, you know, I'm glad I still have a few more months to be able to work with all of you. And while I'm certainly very excited about this new journey in my career, I will miss Exeter, and I will always be grateful for what this district has meant to me as a person and as a professional. So thank you so much.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the resignation of Dr. Patrick Winters. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Good luck, Dr. Winters.
Moving on to is recommended the Board of School Directors approve the following Personnel Items, number under number four, Appointments, Administrative Staff, Eric P. Flam, Director of Teaching and Learning at a salary of $138,000, effective on or before April 1st, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to say quick, I think that I am in the unique role of having had Mr. Flam as my principal when I was a younger man, and I am very excited for him to be taking and stepping into this new role. I think all of us know Eric as a consummate professional, and I know one time, I think I asked him how it was going with just everything that's been going on, and he said, you know what, Hunter? I just keep my head down and I do my job. And that is the mentality that he's going to bring to this role. I'm so glad that we're looking internally for the talent that the district has and that we're making these personnel decisions with good judgment, knowing who we're going to get and who we're putting in these important roles. And I'm really excited to be working with Eric, as much as I probably won't be personally working with him, but I know that he's going to do a great job, and I'm very excited to see him come on.
So I I pulled this out because I will be voting no on this recommendation. I'd like to say my reason for that. So first of all, it has nothing to do with the creation of the Director of Teaching and Learning position, or who is being appointed to that position. I believe Dr. Flam is doing a great job as Principal of the Junior High School, so it has nothing to do with that. My no vote has to do with the process of how the position is being filled. I believe positions such as this one should be posted, and internal candidates, as well as external candidates, should have an equal opportunity to apply for and pursue the position. So that is why I would be voting no this evening.
Any other comment? All right, Dr. Flam, I'm also very excited to work with you, and I know you'll be very much missed at the junior high by your staff and the students there, but very excited that you're going to be joining the Cabinet at the administrative level. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Mr. Japina. We are now moving on to the Education Committee, Dr. McLendon. Dr. McLendon?
Hey. All right, you know, I've been talking for like two minutes.
Sorry. Sorry.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so Curriculum Committee met on December 1st, and in that meeting, we had Dr. Winters acknowledge Karen Denunzio, Literacy Coach, for being chosen to present at the ASCD Conference. I believe that's in July. And so that is quite quite an honor to be selected, because many people submit proposals and are not selected. And Mr. Campbell gave a presentation, Mr. Campbell and Mrs. Harris gave a presentation on the proposed changes to the graduation requirements that we will be voting on shortly. So we we have the enrollment report for the month of November is attached. And one second. Okay, so actually, okay, let me read the motion first. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approve the following Education Committee Items. I know we're doing Consent Agenda, but these items were not on the workshop agenda, so I'd like to read them.
Yes.
So number one is the purchase of one A to Z text type set per K to 4 building in the amount of $30,397.76 for the purpose of literacy and interventions. The purchase will be paid for using the 2020-2021 Ready to Learn Grant Funds. Item two, a tuition agreement for one-to-one services between Deveraux and the Exeter Township School District for student numbers 700422021 for the 2020-2021 school year. Cost of the one-to-one is $34 an hour or a total of $38,352 per year. Three, an addendum to the Contract for Services Agreement between Austill's Rehabilitation Services and the Exeter Township School District for July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022, and addendum is attached for that. And item four is a change in the graduation requirements for Exeter Township Senior High School students from 25 credits to 24 credits. The revised requirements per area are as follows: English four credits, Social Studies three credits, Math three credits, Science three credits, and additional Social Studies, Math or Science one credit, Health and PE one credit, Arts and Humanities two credits, Elective seven credits. These changes will be reflected in the 2021-2022 Soaring Eagle Program of Studies document and will be effective with the class of 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, can I please have somebody explain item number one and item number three, and then I'd like a discussion on item number four. Just more of an explanation of those three items, please.
Sure, Mr. Japina, I'd be happy to do that. For item number one, we are, as we've discussed previously, seeking to attain, you know, 100% reading proficiency. Part of doing that is making sure that we have not only curriculum resources for the general curriculum, but also intervention resources that allows us to intervene for students who are struggling with reading proficiency. So the A to Z Text Types Program is a program that, it's really not a program, I shouldn't say that, it's a set of resources that we would use or could use as an intervention for what we would consider our Tier Two students. Those are students who are within a year below reading levels, so not most severe and struggling readers, but those students who we would consider on the bubble of proficiency. So this, these materials would be extremely beneficial in us reaching those students who are within one year of reading proficiency. In terms of item three, I would ask, I believe you asked for that one, Mr. Japina, I would ask if Mrs. Harris could speak to the addendum to the Contract of Services Agreement. And then for item four, I would, I could speak to that as well. So let me just skip three for a second. So last time, the Education Committee met Mr. Campbell, along with Mrs. Harris, presented on the change in the graduation requirements. As we look at making the high school the best possible experience for all students, giving them maximum flexibility and really charting their course towards their graduation and post-secondary goals, we believe that these revised credit requirements will give them that flexibility so that they can really pursue passions, they can explore a lot of different interests. For students who have things like BCTC or Special Education needs, the change in curriculum credits will allow them to have more flexibility in meeting those requirements, as well as to do multiple core courses, they'll be able to do that as well. I do see Mr. Campbell is here as well, so I don't know if Mr. Campbell wants to add anything to that in terms of the changes to the graduate.
No, I think you nailed most of the main points there. I think what is really important is the flexibility and the permission for individuals to pursue their own post-secondary goals. And I think that is really what this allows, and it does mirror what many other school districts are doing. And it does mirror what many other school districts are doing, particularly top-performing school districts.
Mrs. Harris, are you able to speak to the addendum and item number three?
I can, thank you. When I was reviewing contracts, I discovered that this contract from 2018 wasn't put forth to the board nor signed by the district, so I'm simply correcting that this evening by putting it forward. It's an addendum because your original contract with Austles was in 1999, I believe, and then they do a multiple-year addendum to that contract every so many years. 2018 was your year to renew that through 2022, but for some reason, it just didn't happen, so putting it up there tonight.
And beyond the contract, could you just explain what it's for?
Sure, that's how we, we contract for our occupational therapy and our physical therapy services for students through Austles.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had a comment about number, number four. I just want to say, like, I really support this, and it may look like we're decreasing by one credit, but we're still, you know, above the state requirement, which is 21, and many of our students are going to get more, far more than 24 credits. So that's just going to be the minimum. So I really support that, you know, that we're going to be able to meet other students' needs, individual needs, give them more options for choosing things that are going to be beneficial to them for their education or career goals. So I, I'm excited about the, the changes that they're going to be made.
In regards to number four, this may be redundant to what Dr. Minor, Mr. Campbell had just stated, but it's rumored that we are lowering the credits strictly to increase our graduation rate, and I was hoping that someone could comment on this rumor.
Sure, I would be happy to comment on that, Mrs. Strutton. That is, in fact, not at all true, although we certainly want to get our graduation rate to 100%, and we don't want to create barriers for students. Again, as Mr. Campbell referenced, we looked at the top-performing school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. One of my goals as Superintendent is not simply to look within the boundaries of Berks County and say, you know, how can we be a higher-rated school in Berks County, but really, how can we compete with the top 10 school districts in the state? And really, ultimately, I would like to see Exeter be one of the top 10 school districts in the state. So when we look out and say, what are those school districts doing that maximize success for their students? We saw very clearly in our research that the majority of those school districts not only had 24 credits, but, but most of them had fewer than 24 credits. Some had exactly the state minimum of 21, including schools like Radnor that are known for their very high academic performance and are, you know, esteemed in the, in, in terms of being a top-ranked school district. So this is really about giving students more flexibility, bringing ourselves closer in line with what the state requirements are and what top-performing school districts ask of students. So, you know, I would give an example, you know, of a student who was passionate about English, wanted to pursue a career in writing, and really wasn't interested in a STEM career and had already taken multiple years of, you know, science and math through their career. This would allow them to take extra English classes, to take extra classes in humanities, and really in their senior year, dive deeply into that interest and that major before they declare it at a college or even, or pursue it in a college, really make sure that, you know, that's in fact where their passion lies. Also giving students more flexibility to take more electives for the same reasons, to really, while they're in high school, maximize that opportunity to pursue different passions. So while we think that for some students, this will pull down some barriers for them, truly, it is about making Exeter a top-tier school district, and we need to bring our practices in line with the practices of other top-tier districts in order to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. McLendon, and we will now move to the Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Mrs. Wilson. By unanimous consent, it's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the policies on the agenda for first and second reading.
Hearing no objections, the policies listed are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to committee reports. We've recently, tonight, switched committees, so we might have a past committee member help out the new committee member, but our new Athletics and Extracurricular Activities Committee Chairperson, Dr. Herring. Do you have anything you'd like to report?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, I just have a few things. The first is that Exeter was able to play four basketball games on Friday before the governor's pause, and our varsity boys and girls basketball teams won both games. Boys defeated Berks Catholic 60 to 49, and girls defeated Pottsville 39 to 33. Secondly, I'd proudly like to say that this past week, the Junior High School Student Council raised over $400 in donations for the Exeter area food pantry. And lastly, on Saturday, December 12th, was the Virtual Senior High School National Honor Society Induction Ceremony, and it could still be seen on our Exeter Senior High E4 YouTube channel. Congratulations to all those inducted. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Mr. Miller, Exeter Community Education Foundation, do you have anything to report?
Uh, yes, basically, two things. First of all, I'm glad to be on this, this committee. I'm very excited to working with the Exeter Community Foundation. The one thing they'd like to report, first thing is, the ECEF is proud to report to, that to date, $30,400 has been raised in EITC donations for the Exeter School District. Our thanks, our big thanks is to JP Mascaro for their $20,000 donation to the program. ECEF has partnered with Exeter Cares to establish Exeter Cares Student Outreach Program. Over the last month, we've raised over $5,000 in support of this initiative. This program focuses on Exeter Schools' students, families that might be having trouble during this challenging times. Money raised can help pay for the, the set things such as winter coats, warm clothing, eyeglasses, personal care items, hygiene products, medical copays, sports fees, and many other necessary items helpful for the student's success. Thanks to the administration for helping us in rolling, rolling this out, and each and for each building's guidance staff and nursing who will be helping ECEF. Want to also recognize, there was a young man, I just got an email for a young man by the name of Damon Schaefer. He actually was really concerned about the students and decided to raise money by selling his Legos. Coincidentally, he was able to get $200 and actually put it into the program. So I really like to thank Damon Schaefer and his, and his mom, Julia, for helping out with the ECEF program. Really nice of them.
Yeah.
All right, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, our next committee report is our Equity and Excellence at Exeter Committee chaired by Dr. McLendon.
Somebody want to tell her?
Sharon, you're muted.
Oh, sorry about that. I do that every time. I was just saying that the Equity and Excellence Committee, we meet the first Monday of the month, but we did not meet this past Monday, so I do not have a, a report today, but what I'll do, I didn't realize this was even going to be on because I haven't been giving reports on this. We, I presented like, I don't know, six months or so ago. So what I'll do is prepare something for our next meeting then, and just give you an update of what the committee has been doing for, you know, the past several months.
That's great, thank you. Our next report is from the BCTC Committee. Mr. Fiddler is going to be our new chairperson of that committee, but I believe Dr. McLendon was, went to the meeting last week.
Yes, I think that the position will start at the New Year for Mr. Fiddler, that's what I was told. So the BCTC met on December 10th, this past Thursday. They had a reorganization meeting. And other than the things that are in your JOC briefs, they talked, Dr. Kraft talked about the challenges that they're facing with the pandemic. And there are 16 sending schools, which all of the schools are doing different things when they have cases, you know, the number of days that they close and so forth. So they are trying to follow CDC guidelines for that. We just got a, Dr. Kraft just sent out a message to parents that they've had some cases at both the West and the East Campus, and as a result, they're going to be fully virtual from January 4th through January 8th. And that's in line with, with what some of the other schools are doing. They had, I don't, you know, I'm really going to be sad to leave this, leave the Board of the BCTC. You know, I really love what they're doing there, and I always have things to share about, you know, what the wonderful things our students are doing. But one of the things that they did in their advertising and design program was had the students create posters, safety posters, and with information about COVID-19, and hung those up around their building, so. That's one thing, and you know, I'm proud of their students for the work that they do. BCTC received two PDE grants. One was a competitive equipment grant for $50,000, and the second one is a supplemental equipment grant that starts out at $3,000 and increases. And last year, they received $130,000. So the next meeting is Jan- January 27th. So they normally meet the fourth Wednesday of the month, but they met on December 10th because of the reorganization. So that would be the next meeting, that would be at the Ole campus. That concludes my report on BCTC.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say, I'm very much looking forward to assuming this position and also looking forward to serving with Dr. McLendon on the Curriculum Committee, which is a new assignment for me.
Great, thank you, Mr. Fiddler. All right, BCIU Board of Directors, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Mrs. Wilson. The BCIU Board of Directors met earlier this month for the reorganization meeting, and all their leadership group essentially remained the same. My, I will continue to be on and serve as the representative from Exeter for this coming school year. My, my, my term actually on that board is, is up in 2023. So the, the next meeting of the, of the BCIU Board is January 21st, so there is no further meeting in December.
Okay. You're next also for Legislative Liaison, so do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
Yeah, I, I just would like to maybe quickly kind of go through a recap of the the Pennsylvania elections, what happened this past November, and because I think it's important for us as a board to kind of keep up with what's happening in our, in our legislature. And I'll try my best this year as the liaison to kind of keep the board up on things that I think are relevant, any, any, any bills that are passed and anything else that might be happening in the legislature that's passed on through either PSBA or that I'm able to get, you know, through other means from, from Harrisburg. So, so this, this past November, Pennsylvania voters returned the 18 incumbent members to the U.S. House of Representatives. So we have nine Republicans and nine Democrats essentially representing Pennsylvania in Washington. In terms of the row offices this past election, Josh Shapiro, the Democrat, was reelected as the state's Attorney General, while the Auditor General and the Treasurer seats changed parties this year. So Republican Tim DeFor is the winner of the Auditor General seat vacated by Eugene DiPasquale, who ran for, unsuccessfully ran for U.S. Congress, and Republican Stacy Garrity was elected as Treasurer. She won over incumbent and former Treasurer Joe Torcella. The, the Pennsylvania Senate, Pennsylvania House, saw very little changes. It was really all about incumbency. But there were some turnovers in the legislative seats, but not to the degree that was predicted. All of the 203 House seats were on the ballot this year, and half of the 50-member Senate was also on the ballot. So according to the results that we received from the Pennsylvania Department of State, a total of five incumbents were defeated, and two House seats were flipped. One was Republican, a Democrat, the other Democrat, a Republican. So the net effect is that the House Republicans will grow their majority to 113 seats, up from 110, and that'll be 90 seats for, for Democrats. On the, on the Senate side, the status quo continues with no party gains. 28 Republicans, 21 Democrats, and one Independent. Just another area that I wanted to speak to very briefly is charter school, cyber charter school reform. It's our understanding that from our communications from PSBA, we're hearing that there will be a task force that will be engaged in January to start to develop some specific components of a proposed charter school, cyber charter school reform legislation package. And hopefully, you know, as school districts, we'll get a set of talking points that we can use to help educate the public and to communicate to our legislators on some of the various issues relative to the need to change the charter's school legislation, especially as it pertains to, to financing. We also, as you might remember, as a board, we passed a resolution, as, as did 335 school districts in Pennsylvania regarding charter school and, and charter, cyber charter school reform. So, you know, it's important that the legislators, legislators know how school districts are feeling about the current impact that particularly cyber charters are having upon our school operations. In terms of finac, final financial impact of, of cyber charter, since COVID-19, since the pandemic hit, there has been a huge increase in cyber charter school enrollment across the country, also in, in Pennsylvania as well, where cyber charter school enrollment is up 63% and to 62,000 students as of October 1st. So Pennsylvania will, all the school districts will collectively be spending as much as $350 million more dollars this year in their cyber tuition bill, tuition bills this year alone due to the pandemic-generated cyber charter enrollment increase. So these are a couple of the areas that are going to, I'm going to keep my eye on, and, and at some point, I think we'll be engaging in some continued advocacy to try to impress upon our legislators, then, then the very desperate need that we have with school districts throughout the state for, for changes in legislation in this area. So thanks. That's, that's all for my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Okay, Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Arons.
Thanks, Allison. Just a few items to note. I'll be meeting with Joe Staub soon in the future. Just to keep communication channels open with Exeter Township, there was a decision by the Board of Supervisors in Exeter last night regarding Happy Landings and the removal of certain equipment pieces. I talked to Dr. Minor today, and we're just reaching out to gain some clarity around what's going to be done there and what the timeline looks like. So I'll report back when I have more. Other than that, I just wanted to also thank the Exeter Township Police Department. They had been doing a, I believe it's called the Shop With a Cop Program, where they were helping out some of the needy families in the township, and I think a number of those families were identified by the district, and those programs were able to help them get groceries, I think, get Christmas presents as well. So I just wanted to say thank you for the Police Department in doing that and for the district. the district administration's cooperation with identifying some of those families. Other than that, I'll be reaching out to the Borough of St. Lawrence to just let them know that I'm the new liaison, and if they have anything that they need to reach out to me about, I will be happy to meet with them or connect them with Dr. Minor if it's an administrative issue.
Okay, thank you. All right. Before we adjourn tonight, are there any other board members who'd like to be heard at this time?
Since we gave a shout out to the Exeter Police, deservedly so, I'd like to give a shout out to the Exeter Fire Department and Township Services for their annual runaround at township with the Santa Claus. That's the tradition in this community, and everybody looks forward to that, especially this year. So thank you to them.
While we're heaping praise on the township, I just wanted to add for the road crew, thank you guys for all that you're going to do tomorrow. I hope that there are many donuts and coffee waiting for you in the office because we're going to appreciate it when we can drive on Thursday. Thank you.
And I just wanted to, with the virtual day being tomorrow, just wanted to clarify if the lunch pickup is still continuing and if children are still receiving related services.
Mrs. Harris, do you want to speak to the Related Services? And Mr. Pike, do you want to talk to how lunch would work tomorrow?
I'll go first. So yes, tomorrow is a full day of instruction, so any services that students are expected to receive, they would be receiving.
I don't see the lunch being picked up tomorrow. It was too short of a notice to make box on just for everyone. The ones that were already scheduled will be picked up, but it won't be additional.
Okay, anyone else? I just want to mention that starting in 2021, we're going to be changing the format of our workshop meeting to a committee of the whole meeting, which means that the committees that need to meet that evening will meet and discuss and have conversations, and will all be present for those committee meetings. The first committee of the whole meeting will be on Tuesday, January 5th, starting at 6 o'clock PM, where the Education Committee will get us started that evening. And I did want to just mention that those meetings will be virtual. So we will be meeting virtually Tuesday, January 5th, 2021, as our next meeting. All right.
And Mrs. Wilson, those meetings are also, will be open for public participation.
They will be open for public comment. Yes, they will. Okay, by unanimous consent, I will now adjourn this meeting. If I hear no objections. Hearing no objections, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great holiday, everyone.
Good luck, Mrs. Wilson. Happy New Year.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.